I didn't see that.
Alright, so let's get started. Until the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, well, everybody just be adjusting with time here, so we gotta run the meeting tonight out of the seniors there. We're all messed up, but anyway, this is good. Alright, regular agenda panel, my chair change on here. Number fifteen. That's all. The agenda with said changes.
Second.
Three.
Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
All favors say aye.
Aye aye.
Period. Five. Mask, I swear. Alright. Do you have any questions on the, uh, events?
No.
Take a motion to approve.
So.
Right, make a motion to give a second.
Second.
Okay, all favors say aye.
Aye aye.
Alright, motion period. Special counsel meeting minutes that we've got on October twelve.
That was the only thing was, it still had the draft watermark on it, so I don't know if you need to remove that before we move to that.
Oh, after we approve it?
Oh, okay.
So, it is fine with that, so I don't know, just say approve the meeting minutes, get the removal of the draft watermark. Okay?
Okay.
Well, I'll do. Okay, alright, Brian, you can move your hand to the second.
Okay.
Second, okay, all favors say aye.
Aye aye.
Alright. Hold it calm, anybody got anything you want to talk about tonight? Podium up here, if you got something on a chat set about. One once. Twice. This, we move on to the shared report. Got a draft?
Nothing in English, man.
One second. Alright, so number nine here, Lucas, you wanna start that one?
Uh, yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, can everyone hear me, I'm not sure if my mic is on or not. Uh, the first item we have is, uh, an assessment, appeal, objection meeting. The special assessment commission, uh, was tasked with, uh, levying, uh, both assessments for various projects to the city. So, have four of those, uh, before you, tonight. Uh, the purpose of, uh, tonight's meeting is to allow those that filed written protests with the city, uh, to present their appeal, uh, and objection to the special assessment commission's determination, uh, at, uh, this meeting. And, uh, those written protests or objections were to be filed with the city auditor. I believe the city auditor has presented those to the council, so you are all aware of, of who had, uh, objections to the determination that was made, uh, by the special, uh, assessment commission, which, uh, they confirmed these lists that are before you tonight, uh, on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Uh, in our office, published notice in the paper, uh, stating that this meeting will be held tonight. And again, that, uh, those that are agreed by the determination of the special assessment commission can appeal, uh, and object to that decision before you, tonight. So, that being said, uh, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it over to you, unless you would like me to turn it over to, uh, Jim to explain, uh, the project. The first project, which is, uh, Storm Stewart and Straits Improvement District, twenty nineteen dash one.
What would you like? I think one of the things you mentioned about that, that they had a written protest. And I think, seeing we don't have five hundred people here tonight, I think we'll waive that and let people object without having the center written notice of their temperature. So, now with that, I will, uh, I'll send it off to Jim.
Um, like you, this project consisted of the construction of Lakeview Drive and seven hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty, three to four schools, high school, middle school. Like we've done this six months of the, of the Luther church rats around, um, to, uh, seventy-sixth Avenue, water sewer, square, street, concrete gate. And the construction of, uh, stormwater.
Okay, so, at this point, um, I'll open up for a public hearing. That, um, I guess, does anybody have any particular objections to the twenty, dash nineteen, dash one? Assessment? You like? Okay. Trying to keep it three minutes, okay?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, for city council members, from the recommended, Levi Bachmeyer, business manager for West Fargo Public Schools. I appear before you tonight to protest the special assessments levied against the tax payers of West Fargo Public Schools on project, uh, twenty nineteen to one. Uh, before I began and after my start date as business manager in November of twenty nineteen, multiple attempts remained to collaborate with city staff to attempt to quantify the unique impact that the construction of two large schools would have on the Horace community. From the beginning, district leadership, including the superintendent and school board president, indicated their willingness to discuss a premium assessment to the district in recognition of the infrastructure needed to support a school, provided that a comprehensive justification could be provided to the school board. This is a willingness that I would add, that has never been extended to the cities of Fargo, or West Fargo, or Harwood, while any new schools have been planned inside their boundaries. We have always been assessed as a standard, typical property owner. Um, tonight, I had planned a rundown of the various meetings that had, uh, happened between the district and the city. But in respect to the three-minute time limit, I will just note that there were several, uh, between March twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, and March fifth, twenty-twenty, where districts, uh, officials left that March fifth meeting with the expectation of receiving communication from city officials regarding potential methodology for this project. No communication on proposed methodology was ever transmitted to the district, and a request for an update went unresponded to. Eventually, we received a response, where the district was instructed that as property owners, we should review the proposed final assessment amounts in the newspaper, look for a letter of public hearing notification, and attend a protest hearing. In a subsequent meeting with the city, the district was instructed formally protest in front of the special assessment commission, which we did. Since then, city and district officials have met periodically to discuss concerns over the assessments and future planned infrastructure projects. The school district understands that the final decision regarding assessments rests with the city. Our request from the very beginning has been to have enough detail to share with our board to justify the proposed amount. By providing that information with sufficient support on a timely basis, the board could have likely supported being assessed at over one hundred percent. We've met numerous times with city officials and were promised, were promised that information. In the end, we were disappointed that those promises were not kept. As a public, public body yourselves, I believe you can understand the desire to be fully informed, even when the final decision means not to yours to make. For your time, I'm happy to stand for any questions that may have.
So, um, I believe we had some good communication with your folks probably around the April main timeframe when we talked about some of the stuff. I don't know what we were gonna communicate with Blackout, we did. Well, so, um, but, okay, fair enough. Anybody else have any questions during this session?
No. Cool. So, this was a recommendation from the special assessment commission, and this is what they approved for these special assessment models, based on perceived benefit. I'm assuming that's correct statement, right? I mean, that's what. Th- th- this was the, the document we're looking at today is the outcome of the special assessment meeting, the last one that happened.
It's the list that they confirmed on September twenty-third.
Okay.
And that it is a shared, shared, it isn't, you know, completely the school, it is the other property owners in the, in the general vicinity within that, uh, district boundary.
Correct. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else have any, uh, points to protest against the Lakeview Drive assessment? Yep. Uh, the fact that I'm gonna close the public hearing at this point.
So, so, before you, Mr. Mayor, for the city council, uh, city council can either confirm the list as is, amend or alter the list, uh, based on, uh, the comments that you hear, uh, before you, tonight. Uh, or I guess the, the other option is table it, if you need additional information, uh, that, that we can then provide to you, uh, at a different day. But, uh, the three options that the council has before you, tonight.
Okay. You guys have any questions? That's what, what you kind of, just laid out for us well. Stand and practice, you're right, Jim, there's nothing different that we wouldn't have done the other time here with this, so.
One thing to point out, Jim, did the actual construction cost come in, or under the, uh, planned budget or planned construction? It came in, right, right at, right at the estimated construction cost, so what, what we originally communicated for the estimated project was within a few percentage points of what the actual construction cost, so there was no overage on the, the, you know, over the amount of what was planned, or for the. For the non-development. Okay. The assessment district didn't change size or anything, so the same, same number of property owners and was just a percentage, um, of benefit. It's an allocation according to the special assessment recommendation.
Just any comments or questions?
Motion we can skip that provided by the special staff member for the mission?
Okay, they make the motion.
Okay.
Okay, all no problems? Yes, Chelsea?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah, so I guess, Mr. Mayor, the, the same song and dance for this one. Uh, any individuals that are aggrieved, uh, by the methodologies used by the special assessment commission to determine assessments for, uh, this project, which is Storm Stewart and Street, Improvement District twenty nineteen dash three, uh, which is sixty-third street, um, they have the opportunity, uh, now to present before the city council. And same action item for the city council, uh, you can either confirm the list as proposed, make, uh, an alteration, or table, uh, your decision for additional information.
Alright. Okay, so with that, we'll open up the public hearing, does anybody want to, uh, come forth and do an objection to the assessment for fifty-third street? But then, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, again for the record, Levi Bachmeyer, business manager at West Fargo Public Schools. Uh, I don't have anything more beyond the prepared statement that I had read for the first project, so I'll spare you all that again. Uh, just the one point that I did skip that I guess I will violate. Uh, when we left, uh, meeting with city officials on March fifth, uh, we left with the expectation of receiving communication from the city regarding the potential methodology that could be used to assess, uh, the premium to the district. Up to this point, uh, we were told that the tentative assessment to the district, uh, would be assessed at one hundred and fifty percent, which was, in the words of city officials, pulled out in the half. I will leave that there, stand for any question?
Okay. Um, Brett and Jim, did you guys have any comment on that? I know you guys ran out of meetings, and I know I didn't sit down on all of them, so.
One hundred and fifty percent was an effort to recognize that the school requested these projects, additions to these projects. Also, the projects with two roads were upsized, concrete, applied into truck traffic deliveries and buses. Testing them, or starting the mission.
Right, because I mean, there was special trickless dances here, because we were basically building this as a little particle time, so. Very, I know that, that conversation had taken place numerous times with school district and where, where that happened, so. Brett, do you have anything to add to that, I mean, you said.
I'll just say, uh, there are many conversations done with Mr. Bachmeyer, some without. And the assessment amount was discussed many times with the school district. Uh, Mr. Bachmeyer wasn't at all with his time, and there was no issues with that at the time. Although, yeah, it was not finalized, when we were discussing it, it was saying, we had gone back and forth on even a bigger assessment, or it was one hundred and fifty, where it came out, or was it more? And that's where we ended, and that was what was going through the special assessment commission, most people.
Any other questions for Levi?
I guess I'll just add, I think this one hundred and fifty percent is getting beat up, regardless of the percentage, the, the dollar amount would have been the same. So, I think we need to all stop focusing solely on the one hundred and fifty percent, and realize that the assessment is the dollar amount that's getting assessed to the property, not necessarily the percentage. If the special assessment sold it, it could have gone a hundred percent on the school, and then had other, uh, properties in that improvement district at fifty percent. You know, and the dollar amount's still gonna be the same, so I think we need to stop focusing solely on that and calling it over assessment. They were assessed the benefit, uh, that's the special assessment commission determined to be, uh, the benefit for that property, so just so everyone's clear on that. Uh, it wasn't an over assessment, it's just the percentage reflex that it is.
Okay. Brett, did you have any questions for Levi?
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else for sixty-third street that want to do an objection?
Eric, council members, uh. Uh, Don Ever, the. Just a joining property owner, I guess, uh, working with the, uh, engineers, city staff, along with, uh, the school. And I think it's really gonna kind of come down to methodology of how it's gonna, uh, come into play here. Uh, to Lucas, who was, uh, playing, yes, uh, I believe the dollars were there, but, uh, at a, at whatever assessment, uh, whether we're doing equivalent unit or also, I mean, obviously, if they have two parcels or four parcels of big lots, those can't get treated as a, as an individual lot. And so, if there's an equivalent unit, how does that get, or I guess, my, my protest and my suggestion would be that I don't think it would be, uh, equitable. So, I'd like to go on the record that the protest, the assessment, it's getting pushed over the, the level. Again, we didn't ask for a three-lane concrete road, for the, to their, uh, anecdotal, uh, example. If the roads are concrete, they're nominal a hundred dollars a foot. Grass hole, that road was just shy of four hundred dollars upwards. And so, while, uh, I'm an advocate for concrete for robustness and longevity, I think there has to be some. Things have done as best even materials, that is gonna be a road, it's gonna be a, a workhorse towards the city. While, uh, it, it may not be, uh, able to happen on this particular project, but I would urge and request in the future that the city can help build some, some all these more robust roads, not for local roads, not for local movements, but some of this other stuff.
Question? Jim, can you comment on that a little bit, or maybe on the meth- methodology that came about with, uh, the process on this one?
The methodology on this, because typically, these, these streets are linear foot, front-footed, and this one is, people, there would be unfair assessments to the parcels on concrete. But, oh, secret, uh, county street, we want physical units to accomplish the whole development.
So, this was an unusual, though, as far as laying out a methodology on this one, or was it just atypical, or?
No, it wasn't atypical, but we're still working, working, some new work on, like, special assessments with the city. These processes, we don't have a policy in place, so we're working towards that.
Okay, so this, example, Mr. Bellman, for example, equivalent unit, uh, an acre, uh. Equivalent units on an acre for the city of a large street, put on a practice. Three equivalent units per acre. Or one, or three.
Roughly one.
So, one lot per acre. You have four, four lots per acre. So, I can see how, as a one unit per acre, now there are three yields, or it's a house per acre, and a three yield per acre, it seems equivalent. But when we have a four to one, it seems a little. Like I said, I don't, I'm not here to, uh, build on, undo it, this kind of request, but, uh. Alright. Jim? Brett, anything, probably had them here, part of the, the, the part of the. Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing, if anybody else wants to come. Once, or twice, and I'll close the public hearing, um, further as to.
So, again, Jim, just to clarify, the construction costs on this came in right at, we're in line with, with the engineering estimate, so it isn't like there was any overages on, on the actual construction cost on this one.
Okay, um, we're through the discussion, we're gonna. Second. Second. Okay, we'll call this, you?
Yeah.
Chelsea? Brian?
Yes.
Alright, so then, number eleven, Lucas?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, same for this one, the special assessment commission confirmed the list on September twenty-third. Uh, this next project is for, uh, Storm Stewart Street Improvement District for twenty nineteen dash two, uh, which is the Roundabout Project. Uh, this, uh, project received the most attention, uh, at the special assessment commission meeting. Um, uh, so again, before the council, is, uh, anyone that's aggrieved by, uh, decision from the special assessment commission that was, uh, made to confirm that list can present, uh, their appeal, uh, before you, tonight. And the action item for the council is to confirm the list, uh, alter the list, or table it for additional information.
Okay, so this assessment was one that involved pretty much the whole column, correct?
This one where we proposed multiple assessment districts, personal was typical, we'll have probably directions, and the council went back and decided it would be a full citywide assessment. We adjusted this one to city, city broader, citywide, based on equivalent units on the formula of West Fargo. Comment with it?
Yep. Yeah, that's nice. I wanted to clarify that, so. Okay, so with that, we'll have the public hearing on the Roundabout seventy-sixth assessment, the third hearing, um, assuming there are a few people who want to talk about that one. So, if you raise your hand if you want to do an objection to the Roundabout. Okay, let's start over here, and we'll just go around the room and come back up again, so, sure, go ahead. Three minutes over five.
Hello, my name is Sharon Arnold, I live at ninety-eight twenty-two Robin Road, Horus, my land, the butts up to hundred fourteen, Robin Road. Mine was assessed for nine point eight nine acres, and so they call it nine point eight nine building units. But my land is considered agricultural land, and of my building units, I have a two-hundred-foot setback that I'm not allowed to build on. So, I'm not sure that I should, I'm not certain that I should be billed for that amount of, uh, property. So, that would reduce my acreage by thirty-six percent. And then, the setback acreage for Conwood fourteen would be about another half acre, so I believe that mine should be set at a lower rate than the four thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars. It should be closer to five point eight acres rather than nine point eight nine acres.
Okay.
Well, in the past, there's been any exception taken for egg land, and then just, uh, the whole, you should pick some equivalent, for previous projects, too. As far as thinking of setbacks, that we haven't done, there hasn't been any deferral in special assessments for egg lands, so here it's been a.
Right, but I mean, that's the something that's consistent that has been done even prior years back, is that the egg land was considered.
But yet, you tell me I can't build on that first two hundred feet, that's not buildable acreage, so don't tell me that it's egg land, and then I can't build on it.
If, if the property got rezoned, then you could build on it, the setbacks would be less.
Why is that?
Because it's a different zoning district, so if you rezone the property from egg to a, a different zoning district, then you could.
Was it zoned because it was egg land, it was supposed to have a ridge going across the shiny river there?
Just explain that if the property was rezoned from egg to a residential district, then the setbacks, uh, would be less. Uh, unless you're talking, there's a one hundred and fifty-foot water core setback, uh, so that applies a few things to the river, uh, but otherwise, um.
It's not correct.
Okay.
Because all of the homes along Robin Road have to be set back two hundred feet from the road to build. I just feel I'm being taxed on the.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, if they confirm.
Hello, my name's Marie Lockburg, I live in the twenty acres development. And I had, um, believe the assessment of the seventy-sixth Roundabout was estimated at four hundred and twenty-five dollars for two acres and below, is that correct? Is that correct?
Jim. But we've got a round around there, we've had to make some tweaks with that, using with other. Jim, what's on there?
Well, okay, we own three point eight five acres, so at that rate, you have assessed me at one thousand eight hundred seventy five dollars, which does not quite equate. I would like you to pay another book at that assessment.
There's a way you. You look at exactly square footage or.
Well, you said it was forty four.
Quick one, you need to.
Yeah, you said four hundred twenty five, two acres and above, is what you started for assessment, I believe.
No. Be based on the total number of equivalent units that were brought to the cost, so the four sixty five.
Well, there was a sign.
Around that, not necessarily more than four sixty five five, if it's equivalent. Because I said, like I said, when you change one assessment, one parcel on the list, like the special visit, which you correct us to do, you change the model. So four sixty five times it doesn't work out. I'm trying to.
You need a parcel number, better right here.
Last four digits, probably.
What?
The last four digits, your parcel number?
Um zero, zero, two, zero.
Get on here. What was your, what was your last answer?
Lockburg, LA UVA, we can't be, we don't keep.
About these four, so one thousand three hundred and half. The three zeros are two zero?
Yes.
One thousand three hundred and seventeen. So it's around the four hundred per acre and it's three point eight four acres. What did you say you thought it?
Well, going by the, the, what do you call it, estimated four twenty five. For two acres and below. If you don't mean that, right, four acres.
What did you be looking for? Did I ever notice there's another?
Well, if you do four, just for example, the four twenty five or two acres and below. So say we have four acres, which we don't, that only ends up with eight hundred and fifty dollars. Have an example.
There's another property, it must be right next to you, because they're assessed at the same rate and they're right at four acres. So it's something you need to keep that three and a half.
Those one, one thing.
Um.
To the south of us or to the?
I can't tell, I'm just looking at the spreadsheet, so it doesn't just tell me four acres.
Because the ones to the north of us and the ones to directly, keep them north of us and directly to the south of us have.
There's a plot really close, there's a plot, looks like a plot really close to you and it's four acres, it's slightly larger than yours, and it's the same assessment value.
Then that's something to the south of us?
I don't know. Doesn't say on there, it doesn't say, it's just a spreadsheet, it goes by the rules, it's just by legal descriptions, I can't tell which one is.
Well, that one was, yeah, I don't think I'm getting which one you're looking at, which they also.
Basically, it looks like it's consistent with the other lots.
After the Special Assessment Commission protest hearing, it came up and asked the same question, we went back through this, we checked and verified this was. Written with the formula as, as shown, and published by West Park, so.
And I know you did send out the letter for that special hearing on that particular assessment, which came. About a little. I was wondering if in the future, when there's gonna be special assessments near our area, Hundredth Avenue, will there be letters sent out? To white people, because if you're going by what's written in the newspaper, which mostly no one gets anymore.
Policy that we have in place now is that whenever a special assessment district is created, we ask that a letter be sent out, that is not a requirement.
I understand.
Because the city is going above and beyond to say, okay, we're trying to notify all those property owners in that assessment district that a project is being proposed and there's, you know, the projected cost, you know, engineering cost is being used for that construction of that project. But that that is done after the special assessment district is created, or at least proposed, right? It's proposed before it's actually approved, right? Lucas, so that's when that letter gets sent out now, that hasn't always been the policy, we're just putting that policy in process so that people can be notified. In addition to legally, we're only required to notify, notice it in the paper, but we're doing that now as a matter of course for all of our new projects.
Thank you very much for that, because the special assessment on the seventy sixth Avenue came after the project was done.
Keep in mind though, keep in mind though, that this is a cost sharing, so that the city horse and the colony and others contributed significant dollar amounts to reduce overall costs of this project. So there's been significant contributions from other parties.
And that's, that's great, but I guess, in future, as if anybody would like to know what they're going to be assessed before the project's even done.
It's all along, it's the hard part. That's the testament.
Well, I understand.
We're working on that, setting up this policy so. We have to lose your parcels, and then now that we're looking at it, why are we down? So we can generate potential assessments, and something we would. And working on with self-deal partners, the first edition, we have the time to get out in front of it and publish something. If this is what, based on the methodology that's been used in the past, this is one, looks like, granted, it hasn't been confirmed by Special Assessment Commission, hasn't been brought to them. But the typical methodology would be quite in the special assessment. So I did look into this, you have roughly three point eight five acres. The way the formula works is if you go over two acres, basically drop one off. So for example, if you have two point one acres, you're assessed with one point one, especially if you are assessed with two point one, so three point eight five is the last. So as far as that's here.
Thank you.
So the other thing I'll bring up with that, too, when we're talking about special assessments, letting folks know, being the forum is right down, currently down to two, I believe it is. We're trying to um see if we can waive some of that and put some of these notices up on our website. Um it's a little pricey, putting it in the paper, they don't be reads anymore. So uh we're gonna see if there's some talk at the legislative legislative level, this section, to see if there's something they can do about that, so that we can get the information out, not just having to put it in the paper. Uh we can do a little bit more than that, so we're gonna try and work on that, so people get informed about these things real quicker than just having to read it in the paper. So anyway, okay, so who's next over here wants to talk about the Roundabout?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff, my name is Mark Walter, I live at one zero six zero nine, eight seventeen, south. Um and I sent a letter from testing the special assessments, mainly my concerns have to do with the calculation of the special assessment. Um and the other half of that point is, don't touch the park or lots, living the furthest away from the special assessment, pay it, I'm not some casual mall for the project. I had the privilege of sitting in on the Special Assessment Committee meeting, and uh first one, I was at a public hearing as well. And I was also at the second one, and I had a chance to visit with Jim's subordinate or uh cor- or uh comrade, whatever, associate Paul. Okay, no, thank you. And uh we talked about other ways that this could be done, I was a little bit dismayed, though, second Special Assessment Committee meeting, you know, after having this conversation, which I know was a pretty good conversation. Um the Assessment Commission wasn't presented with any other, any other data, um and I think it's, and I don't know if any of you had a chance to sit at a Special Assessment Commission meeting. Um but the first one I went to, they're giving this newspaper with type of all this big, trying to see, see what's going on. One option to look at, and uh not given before meeting, it's just dig up. So here to read my paper, go sort through the paper and try and figure out if this is fair or not. Um the second time, we had a, we had a talk on, like I said, um Excel spreadsheets, as you mentioned, it's in a spreadsheet. Um I worked it myself, we did it down almost pretty easy, we have all the information there, we can sit there and actually throw in another formula, let's try it this way, let's try it that way. Um and you actually give the Assessment Commission something to look at, give them that option. Um these are, these are people that live here that have a city in heart of this city, and I think they have enough mind to, to maybe make the best decision for it. Give the option to present it, you know, not just the one, one option of standing. So I guess uh if I, if you have any questions for me, as far as that goes, I, I think large lots, agriculture, lots, it's a little harder to know, like I say, we're the furthest one from the Roundabout. I would like to see other options for them.
Can you touch a little bit on, you talked about the potential for residents, if you could come back to your letter, aren't you like, you have one resident, you have a potential one?
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good point, um if I live on five acres, um I don't have any privacy subdivision, and I understand the idea behind trying to catch growing development in ours, right? Trying to catch all of it, I don't have any, any uh ambition to subdivide my property. I drive one car around the Roundabout, someone in town who has a small lot drives one car around the Roundabout, I'm getting charged for equivalent units. I'm not driving four kinds of cars around the Roundabout, so um that's a good point, um I would just like to see other.
Methodology for this started with the public, started such quality for my priority, one thing I had, one of the quotes, and there, they titled this section as that regional improvements, like all street. First, regional street improvements using the equivalent unit method to allocate assessment, calling it calculation. So I was trying to get it public, so reasonable that we could have the movement behind, so I'll try to read that. So uh it would be a challenge to do for particles. The part that you're not being able to tell, if it's provided, something that's always been provided.
Problem is, we have to make the decision on the, the size, on that measure of, and that's really the only measure we have, that's consistent or accurate, you know, across all of the properties is the size of the lot. So I mean, that, you can't, you're not gonna go out and do a survey of how many cars are in each, our home by each homeowner, in each of the lots in town, and try and use that as an adjustment. So lots of things that, you know, we could do, that we have to follow the model that, you know, is, like Jim said, is, is either published or adopt a policy that we can use going forward, but. This point.
Well, and just, and that's, you know, when I said cars that go around the Roundabout, I'm saying households, right? I have one household, but that means I have fourteen each kids, or all four each kids are on the same person in a household.
But that's because you've got more land, so that's the only measure, I mean, it's what it is. That's the only measure that we could say, equitably split across every lot owner or property owner, whether it's a hundred acres of land, there's egg, and nobody living on it, or, you know, five acres and one person, one family.
Your special assessment ability isn't even getting actually picked up by the thinking.
Well, that, that's what it is, it's the, the amount of land for each one. And they're usually, they're, they aren't looking at the number of households of people that are living on that.
What about proximity around the Roundabout, where the furthest from the Roundabout?
That, they, they do a percentage based on that, so.
Well, no, it's a flat, it was flat across the city.
This, this case, it was flat across the city.
Flat across the city, there were no tiers, there were no rings, there were no.
Okay.
It was land and equivalent units.
Okay.
But I mean, that stuff was discussed, that they do have different options, we can just present one option, say, okay, stick to this one, it's the only option. We discussed with their percentages, if they want to go to a certain area, uh proximity from where the project is actually located, as Jim discussed earlier, uh going by a half mile, and then having a certain percentage for, for that portion, and a certain percentage for the next portion. So we do have these discussions with the Special Assessment Commission, so they, and they have an option of, of choosing whatever uh they desire as a, as a method that they think will calculate uh the best assessment. So we, we do have those conversations, and I know that they can tell us, uh you know, what, what they think is fair, and we're just there to provide the information and, and data and, and guidance on what statute requires.
If I can be. But still, this commentary, okay, anything else? Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um who else wanna talk about the Roundabout, any protest on the Roundabout, Harvey? Alright.
Well, I can, Harvey, I can, I can say the hundred, under fifteen dollars. I think just four sixty four an acre, it's a little high price, I think, I think five hundred dollars for this land about twenty five acres. I, my tax, ten to twenty dollars acres now, is like the forty longer two. Five thousand and ten dollars. Then land out for the hundred and ten acres. Then the specials, I'll have about sixty, I'll have a little forty bucks about, I could have. I had just think just four or six, I've got a hundred and three acres, goods I have in the first year, which is worth some money, I'm not the one that bought that. A hundred and forty four, version is aiming a pretty good chunk of it. Take a house of the six hundred dollars a dollar house, divide by four sixty, four by twenty five, is about nineteen dollars. You just don't add up.
Jim, can you kind of respond on that about the acreage, like you said we.
All those negative symbols. So right now, the two properties I looked at, Harvey, you got about forty, forty thousand in there, and I don't have the acres. With the sixty, fifty one, that is about high acres, there goes two bars.
A hundred, I had a hundred and forty four at one, still we have, and I got a hundred and three.
Oh yeah, here's a hundred and forty five, so you have a hundred and forty four, and I was not looking at. About sixty seven dollars, we have, here's a hundred and forty five thousand, we have now. And that goes back, we talked earlier, we have treated it very annually, it's been early, and something that's been developed, treat the.
Just out of curiosity, does West Park would do that as well, do they treat the egg land the same, I don't know.
They might just, I know that there are some people that are afraid of the earth on eggs and stuff.
Right, right. Probably do that.
Yeah, we're not there to deal with that, so.
And I know you catch everybody, because uh St. John's Cemetery has an acre and a half across the road, well over half a mile. You put the dirt on there. Got, got special about those sixty four acres, spot that's been sitting vacant. I know you doubt everybody.
So that's only a cemetery, don't Harvey?
No, it's just vacant lot, just do it however.
You're talking about the north side of the road out there?
North side of the road.
Right, we're there by the cemetery, St. John's used to be, I'm not talking about six.
And my cousin, he's got two hundred and forty acres, four miles. He's asked me many times, oh, why am I in Horace? I'm sure anybody that knows why he's in Horace are dead. He just has, you know, four miles. Forty forty-six.
More than, still within the area.
Well, yeah, I know.
I mean.
Well, okay.
All right, thank you, Harvey. Okay, anybody else want to, want to?
Any other council people, thank you. I'm here on behalf of the protesters. I got thrown in the middle, sorry, a little green, but it's supposed to be sent to the center. I guess I just wanted to be sure that you would see further when they're giving consideration. And I guess one question I did have is, on these assessment alarms, when they would actually bring the assessment, actually take the place? And then the payment would actually start? The T V quarters and whatever, I think that's the pretty green. But that some of the land is going to be acquired by the water board and stuff like that. But I guess if it's being acquired, why is the assessment team actually having to do that?
So for those who don't know, the Bailey's of the south east quarter of County Road seventeen.
You can hit the mic, Jim.
County Road seventeen and County Road fourteen, Honors Avenue. They have some land that's being acquired by the diversion, the water resource board. And they had a question as to if that land would get sold to them responsibly for the special assessments. So that was one big question that I, you heard.
Yeah.
So the special, it's a special.
Stay on the front, stay on the front, right?
Because right now, I have no way of knowing what they're in negotiations, so what they, what they even need. So we just, like I said, the land, really, they came off of, came from the, those parcels, or this amount of land, and that may be used off of it. And they did come in and talk about, but they, they, that was a good question. Sold or acquired by somebody, they're going to be responsible for the assessment.
I wouldn't know either, because that involves other entities. So I suppose whatever they negotiate out, I'm guessing, I don't, it doesn't involve the city directly.
The assessment attaches to the property, so if the property's sold, the assessments will still be there, so revise it still responsible, and the diversion authority, even though it's a political subdivision, they're still subject to assessments, just like the city is, just like the park is. So that will just attach to the land, and as long as it's not paid out early, they'll just carry over.
Because when you're selling the land to the title company, you do a search, any, I mean, that assessment?
They'll typically call us. They'll, they'll ask.
Realtors are typically the ones that call the city and ask.
What type of companies do call the city? And whatever we call them, they say something, you know, at least let them know, project, whatever project it is. Have you discussed how long, how long you're paying that for?
I believe it's twenty.
Twenty, twenty or twenty-five.
Yeah, it's twenty or twenty-five, and this list has to be to the county by November first. The county will have it by November first, and then they'll have the assessment for next year.
All of the staff, you go there and give them.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk about those, any sort of problems about? One once, one twice, they have proposed public hearing on the roundabout seventeen. Jim, who was all, just so everybody understands on the roundabout, who was all involved in the payment, I mean, city has.
Ah, yes, so the, there was special assessments was part of the project. Gas County Highway Department, Gas County contributed a million dollars to the project. City of Horace contributed a million dollars to the project, and they also were assessing the parcels to hire a home, which would, what it looked out to, and what would it be. We actually had a column in the spreadsheet that indicated how much was saved by the city. Yes, a lot. So I'll use Harvey's as an example, since I got it up your head, sorry. Got credit loans, forty thousand dollars, thirty-nine five, just contributions.
Yeah, the city and the company did put in money against the project to make it so it wasn't putting a burden on everybody, and it was going to be a, otherwise it'd be more. So maybe I'll follow that. Yes, we could also, any other questions?
Yeah, Charlie.
Brian?
Yes.
Brent Lucas over twelve. The final project before you tonight is Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District twenty nineteen dash five, which is the physical industrial additions. I believe for the special assessment commission meeting, there was one, only one objection to the proposed assessment, and I think that was actually amended at the special assessment commission hearing or meeting. So again, those before you tonight, you can either confirm it, alter it, or table your decision.
This project consists of the streets, water, storage, sanitary sewer, and sanitary sewer force, or the physical industrial addition. The one petition that we did receive was, there's a large area of landfill land, the work that didn't, to a local benefit, with station, sanitary was sized for that, and force was sized for that. And her complaint was the, we'll have them bonding fees. We're a little bit out of luck with percentage of the, adjusted that, so that her percentage of the soft comps was based on her construction. She also has some clarifications, she has actually represented from Spark. Sent an email with areas highlighting why these certain parcels are getting assessed. Two were the lagoons, one was the storm art upon it, and one service would have come off of eight streets instead of, telling that, hard of this.
Did you get back with us? It turns this toward the special assessment, special assessment meeting, and that.
All right, a little number of public hearings, anybody you have any, if you'd like to appear for the special assessment? One, one twice? Right, um, public hearings. Um, discussion, or any other one I have, you know?
Anyone wants to accept the special assessment as recommended by the, as recommended by the special assessment commission?
Yes. Okay, I will, I'll call it, Dave.
Yep.
Brian?
Yes.
Brian, just touch base, really.
No, that's the.
I would now say, right? What you have before you is the water purchase ordinance, like some of this, to expand, where if you have any other questions tied to it, or if I missed anything. But basically, the first steps in order for us to be able to change our water supply with Casperol, that's done by ordinance, that the first, first reading. And then we have overall agreement with Casperol. It's been a conversation for years, of looking at our water options, what we could do. About a month, month and a half ago, council member Schmidt, myself, Lucas and Jim, we all met with Casperol Water, to discuss their proposed water contract. So we're working on details tied to that. But like I said, this ordinance here really focuses just on that we would have Casperol water as a water supply.
So I can just expand briefly on the actual ordinance, Mr. Members of the council. This is more or less a procedural requirement, it's required by the century code that the city has the ability to provide water service to its residents and desires to purchase water from an outside company, that they have to approve that water purchase contract via ordinance. And so all this does, is say that the city is doing that, they're choosing to go with Casperol to provide water service to the city, and that the term of the agreement cannot exceed forty years, which is set by the century code. So the agreement itself doesn't necessarily have to be forty years, or up to forty years. The city can change the term, I think Brent mentioned before, that I think that twenty years might be more acceptable for a term for that agreement. But again, that can be done in the agreement, that gets finalized between the two governing bodies. And then it just says that the city will agrees to pay for water that's utilized under that contract, even if the individuals that are using it fail to pay it, the city will still compensate Casperol for that water. And then another requirement under the statute is that the ordinance has to be submitted to the orders for approval. However pursuant to your formal charter powers, you are allowed to do without that requirement, and just approve it via motion by the city council, but what we've done to address kind of that concern is, after the second reading, we'll actually have this published in the newspaper, to put those on notice that the city will be contracting with Casperol. And this is something that other cities do, they contract with Casperol and other water service providers like that. I just don't think they go through the procedural requirement of putting this ordinance in the books. And so Horace is just taking that step to have this ordinance in place. And the city of Horace, I think probably half the city already, gets water from Casperol, so this is, they surprise anyone. That the city is going to be working with them to purchase water for remaining public city. So as Brent indicated, tonight will be the first reading of this, this ordinance, as I just explained it.
And the ordinance does not preclude us from continuing to produce water from the city wells if we so choose, correct?
Correct.
Which is basically entering into a purchase agreement with Casperol water to have the ability to purchase water for residents. And it's just our requirement to notice residents that this is the plan, which.
Yeah, and I just, I don't know why, there's this requirement in the century code that an ordinance like this has to be in place. It seems like it's been a question, so the city should purchase water from an outside provider, that would just become sense that the city would do so. But again, the city is just following with provider in the century code.
I mean, your motion to.
Approve the first reading.
I'll make motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance change to purchase water from Casperol water.
Question? Uh, we don't, if it's not title force, when you do your public hearing, when it's land use.
Okay.
I'll, I'm gonna take it, public hearing.
Okay, wait just a second. All right. Give us a eye.
All right.
All right, Brent, on the gas?
Okay, the next one here, this is a second reading for gas franchise ordinance. We got no proposed changes to this ordinance. There are a couple areas that we were looking at with Excel Energy, the, a bunch of couple of intersections. Talked through regarding that ordinance, but we're able to move forward with what was brought to the new changes. What this does enable us to do is for two charge canter out, charge Excel Energy, franchise from, before operating. So what this would do, how that fee is passed on, if it is, that's something you would sell your key, pass on. This establishes that fee, it's a two percent fee, and they pass second, you can continue with the utility, not utility, it's electric, and that's not usually, you know, what the, our proposed starting for this would be March first. That way, we have time to still work out franchise, it's something where that's not a luxury.
So the document still references northern states, you know?
No, ordinance does.
That's what I mean, the ordinance says, so that's primarily the only change that's being made to this, is to reference Excel Energy instead of northern states.
But it would also.
That's their legal name, the primary change is you now charging a franchise, if that wasn't done before.
We didn't have a franchise before.
But no, are we referencing northern states?
Oh, yes, that's their legal name. Doing this instead of Excel. So the only, the only item out of this, right, franchise that, if you work within the, if you not have a permit fee related to those.
What, what, yes, you're correct, what it does is establishes, basically guidelines or rules that you have to follow, they would still need to do a regular permit, something that's been a work in progress with all utilities. These franchise agreements require them to do that, to let us know what work is going on, but they're not required to do a regular. So that's the trade-off for it, and also establishes how, for example, if you're building a construction project, it's a process.
If you want to accept the second reading, your change?
All right, let's see.
All right, I.
All right, so would you, Eric, are you with the, more than Eric?
Yes, I can say, I had a quick question for the council too. There was also a rezon application, rezon change application submitted for this item as well. Would the council be willing to entertain the first reading and take action on first reading of a zoning change for this application? I apologize, it sounds like it didn't get public hearing, we'll review that at the next available public hearing. So what you have before you is an application titled Terry Gardens Third Edition, it was submitted by Peaceful Plain, to Beach Lot Five, or Lot Five, Lot Five, Terry Gardens Edition. I apologize, I don't have a visual today, but you'll imagine this is down Wall Avenue, east of County Road seventeen, east of Terry Gardens Second Edition, so it's between Terry Gardens Second Edition and the drain. What they're proposing is a sixty lot, four block subdivision of approximately eighteen point nine four acres. As you'll hear in the future, the applicant is proposing to rezone all of these lots from A Agricultural to R six High Density Residential, with the proposal to dedicate Lot eleven, Block one, as a parkland dedication of approximately point one eight two acres. The remainder, the applicant is proposing to dedicate cash and loom in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents, and staff approves of that recommendation. We would like to bring that forward to the council today. Just some notable things about this subdivision. Lot eleven, Block one, the park lot that will be dedicated, will be used as kind of an access into the main park west of this subdivision. Also, we wanted to include Wild Goose Lane in the northwest corner. For some reason, it was a ingress, ingress, egress easement, but was never dedicated as public right of way. So with this plan, that will be given a name, a dedicated. I also wanted to note that Park Drive, as part of this application, will be publicly dedicated for the full width and the full length. for the full width and the full length, all the way down to, uh, per review edition. Staff hasn't received any comments, and, uh, therefore staff recommends the application as approved, or, um, uh, as proposed. Uh, however, we wanted to note that with our new application process, now that we have a limited, uh, preliminary plans, uh, staff had some discussion how we'd be going forward with processing developers' agreements. And what we've decided upon is that after a, uh, planning commission meeting, if the application were to be approved, staff would work with the applicant to get that document crafted. Uh, when the document is completed, then we'll bring the full application forward for your review, yeah, have your action. So today, uh, I guess we're not asking for any action, but we did want to provide for the opportunity for a public hearing.
Yep, so we now publish, we'll open that up for a public hearing. Anybody have any comments that they'd like to bring up about Terry Gardens Third Edition? Comments going once, one point, okay, so I'll close the public hearing, there's table to discussion, action, so next. Sixteen is table, so we'll move on to the number seventeen, Barry, you got that one?
Here for item number seventeen, uh, what you have before you, if you recall, uh, back at the August third city council meeting, the council directed staff to look at and evaluate the parking lot buffer requirements in our zoning ordinance. And so what you have before you today is a proposal to amend this section of the ordinance, uh, with, with a couple of caveats. We'd be cleaning up the language for clarification purposes. So we added exemption language to clarify what uses don't need plant units, which are essentially residential and industrial uses. Uh, we also add exemption language to clarify which uses in zoning districts do not require parking lot buffers. Uh, that would be residential uses and the mixed use zoning district. Uh, and then, of course, the, the main feature of our, uh, proposal is to reduce the parking lot buffer from ten feet to five feet. Uh, if we all remember, we imagined a, a scenario where we had two abiding properties where this requirement would apply, where if you have a parking lot between public right of way and a building, it would require a ten foot, uh, parking lot buffer. If you had two properties next to each other, side by side, and that, that scenario occurred, you'd end up with a twenty foot strip, uh, parking lot buffer. Uh, staff doesn't feel that this is an optimized use of land use, and therefore we're following the direction of the city council to reduce that amount from ten to five feet. Uh, staff hasn't received any comments, and, uh, we recommend, uh, of the proposed ordinance change as stated in the staff report.
Any comments ever made?
Uh, there were none. Uh, boulevard trees apply to all properties within, uh, the jurisdiction of the zoning ordinance of the city forest. However, they, this exemption applies to individual plant units. Uh, there's a requirement in our landscape standards that states that if you are a commercially zoned property or multi-family use property, that you are required to provide four plant units for every thousand square feet, uh, of, uh, your property.
All right, so we'll refer to the public hearing on the, um, any comments or questions about the of the ordinance that we've discussed recently? Once, one point, yeah, hearing. Other comments or discussion? Barry, say aye?
Aye.
Barry, you got the next one?
Okay, uh, what you have before you is another proposal for an ordinance amendment. Uh, this would affect, uh, section seventeen point five nine, seventeen point five point ten, seventeen point five point eleven, which would affect the C one, C two, and C three, uh, commercial zoning districts. Uh, so the main changes that are being proposed, uh, for these three, uh, zoning districts are the following. Uh, these are for C one. Uh, number one, allow restaurant use by right rather than conditional use. Two, uh, remove, uh, width minimums. The second one, these would apply to the C two town center commercial zoning district. Uh, there's four of them, one, allow for professional office use. Two, reduce the lot size minimum from five acres to point five acres. Three, remove parking areas from block coverage maximum requirements. D, remove lot width minimums. Uh, and then the third one would apply to the C three general commercial zoning district, there's three, uh, alterations proposed. Number one, allow for professional office, uh, land use. Two, reduce lot size minimums from one acre to point seven five acres. And three, remove lot width minimums. Uh, so as you recall, back during the October fifth, twenty twenty city council meeting, uh, the council directed staff to, uh, have the planning commission address a, uh, proposal brought up by, uh, uh, a developer at the time, uh, about lot width minimums and how that relates to minimum lot sizes. So as directed, staff brought this, uh, issue to the past planning commission meeting, where it was reviewed by the planning commission, and it was decided that lot width minimums would be, uh, removed for each, uh, uh, irrespective zoning district. And that, that's what staff is, uh, proposing today. Uh, the reasoning behind that is, is that so that we end up, uh, optimizing land use so that we don't run into situations where we're forcing a property owner to have extra land that they would otherwise not want or not want to use. Uh, so that, that was kind of the reasoning, uh, behind that. Uh, staff hasn't received, uh, any comments, and we would, uh, request to move forward and, uh, recommend approval as stated in the staff report.
Would no changes with this right there, if I may, would any changes with this from the last reading?
The last reading?
Uh, the only changes were to remove the lot width minimums from each zoning district, other than that, everything is the same.
What was rationale behind removing the lot width minimum?
Uh, the rationale was to optimize land use so that individual property owners could decide, uh, what would be the appropriate lot width for their...
In essence, it's modeling for, uh, to have, it, the business, it's not restricting the width of the business within that strip mall or anything like for the, the whole mall structure.
Absolutely, I'd also advocate too, if you end up with, uh, odd shaped lots, this would create more opportunities for more development of zoning use.
So this is consistent with other ordinances from other surrounding cities?
Correct, yep.
And supplies that all zoning districts? This was reviewed by the, um, planning and zoning law team as well, or, but based on that team, for them?
Yeah, absolutely, and they're recommending approval.
One second.
All right, you got number nineteen, what happened yesterday, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, as you are aware, City of Horace received a transportation assistance grant for continuation of this hundred and seventeen shared use path from the current stop and foot on eighty first avenue up to the round one of fifty sixth avenue. This project is administered by the North Port Department of Transportation and sponsored by the Cass County, by Cass County. Horace does not have five thousand people in the compilation, so Cass County has to be the sponsor of it. I'm jizzling with the DOT, they have a cost participation construction and maintenance agreement for these type of projects. The local authority and the local public authority is the Cass County High Department, but the City of Horace would be responsible for the local share of that. So in order for the Cass County to sign the agreement with the Department of Transportation, the City of Horace has to acknowledge through a council motion that they're willing to participate and provide the local cost share. So as part of this grant, uh, government would, or the DOT would be eighty point nine three percent for a total of a hundred eighty six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, so anything above, you know, will be a responsibility of the City of Horace. So, um, the past first phase, we dealt with recreational trails program, R T P, the North Port Park Grant. That one, the city used sales tax on, uh, I have a hugging want to proceed with the next phase of it, but I need something in a motion, or something in a motion of acknowledging that you're going to be responsible for the local share, and we'll get that to the county so they can sign this, and then if that give a little more than that...
One question, Jim, is this a, is this an agreement that only applies to this specific project, or this is generic agreement?
Just this property.
This is just specific to this project?
Okay. And then for, for the funding source of the, you know, that's always... So that's one of the, there's a certification of local match, and the source would have, would be put in here, City of Horace sales tax, and the county would have to be the one to approve it. So when the project gets constructed, the DOT will pay for the bills, pay the bills that attracted to the contract, and invoice the city. It's all different from the R T P, the R T P was a reverse, and where it was one, paid back to DOT. We need some more, um, commitment that you're...
And this is the, this is the one that, uh, will not happen until twenty twenty two, correct?
Twenty twenty two, yep.
So the work won't happen for two more?
Yeah, it really is something we can bid, it would be absolute end November, December, or just twenty twenty one, and for construction in twenty twenty two.
Is that because of the project award date, or?
That has to do with the, uh, when the funding is available.
Oh, okay, okay.
Uh, the next thing we have on the agenda is Storms Group District twenty twenty dot five, the old Lockspoke, C I M. More here, uh, the bid opening for the project was on Thursday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty. Sixty bits from two contractors, their dynamics and industrial builders, that provide you with bid calculation. The parallel bidder was their dynamics department with a bid of eighty two thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. The other bid we received from industrial builders, a hundred thirty four thousand two hundred seventy three dollars, and our estimate was around a hundred seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So, um, this is for the section between Moss Way and Pretty Drive. We have some areas we're working on, some right of way or reasons through there, so we just believe to keep that pro- process moving forward. So, uh, the completion date for this one, no idea what, what it's gonna do Tuesday, Thursday this week, but, um, well...
Are they anticipating getting started yet this year?
I have, we have to award the first, uh, about to...
I know, but that, that, that would be the goal, if we award that they...
That would be the goal, yes. Uh, we have a completion date of June twelfth, twenty twenty one.
Yeah, it won't, definitely won't be done this year, but they could at least get some portion of it started, correct?
We'll approve it, approve the, uh, award the project of a little bit of your dynamic.
But it's not, it came in not much slower than the estimate, so that's great.
Okay, uh, we'll call this one Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
All right, you almost see what they can do. Right, you got the next one? What you have for you is some changes to the employee handbook, employee handbook is, is every about a year, two years. It's very, it's current, um, I know, Lucas and I went back and forth a little bit today, obviously, with COVID, for COVID. Shows not to, because there's already type of patents tied to that, uh, related to it's basic extension that, that definitely, so it looks like, uh, we didn't do that, it's already a federal, there, I want to make sure misinterpret the, uh, COVID, COVID act, or that, or that. Uh, what we did have are a couple of conditions within there, uh, and it's mainly just noting that under the compensation area that we do have health, dental, and vision insurance, uh, that is offered to employees, spouses, and dependents, but cost shares determined by, say, council annual basis on plan selections. What we do, every year, on Saturday around August, we come to council, show you the insurance information, how much it costs, and request consideration for that plan that's being recommended. Uh, we also sit down with internal suppliers, basically have a year to make sure what they invest, if possible, the best plan for the, for the city. So, uh, we do present the information, and then the council confirms how the, the liability cost share is broken out by the, for between the city employees or the spouses. Uh, the other part we do have, there is an identified in previous version, which is saying there's retirement plan, uh, working towards going from a 401K simple to a standard 401K retirement plan. Uh, and that would require the city, or the employees to match, or, city would match dollars to the, for the employee, and that would be up to six percent, and that is more of the industry norm or standard. Uh, with the government, there is North Port occurs, we did, Congressman Phil on it, we've been looking at this for two plus years. Go back and forth, see what our best options are, North Port occurs, it's up there to where, you know, between employee and employer contributions, it's a ballpark around fourteen, fifteen percent. So this is a bit lower, a little more reasonable for that long pay, I think, that's for the city. Other cities, Metro do offer first, it's a little less, less expensive. But those are the two changes to the employee handbook. So, uh, Mayor, like you said, that we're currently on a simple, as he said, and we are able as a city only to match up to three percent, and we are just giving the three percent, so the change here will be, it's like, it's like, uh, most of us all have to put in towards our retirement for our companies and that match. We are increasing the amounts a little bit so that we can match up to be competitive, because we are being, have to be competitive against other cities and other things in the region, but it's not as much as curves, as he said, we felt this was a good balance between those two. And so, uh, we have, we have participation from our, um, employees, so we feel this is a, a nice benefit to add, plus we give them additional options for investment in those things versus the, uh, just the simple. Yeah, and we talked about this before as well, so we have to look at this, will we be competitive with the Metro?
Correct.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Would you approve the employee handbook, would set changes?
Right, raise your motion.
Second.
Okay, all favorites say aye?
Aye.
Period.
Happy yesterday, working on that?
Yeah.
On our work.
All right, Jim, you got twenty two.
All right, just hit a couple of big projects that were going on tonight, so, down the sentence for the last, our fifth edition will read tomorrow morning, whether it's still on the ground, at eight o'clock in the morning. Uh, we're going to do, have a meeting with contractors on seven six seven tomorrow afternoon, to get Casper, finally, that project dealt. Had a good meeting last weekend with Cass County Highway Partners, got people projects up coming, and five with five hundred and fifty. Region seventeen, most of the Foxville, seventeen, potential Alphamont, sixty four. Um, potential for seventeen to get turnover to the city at some point, once you get within, across people, but kind of phased approach, based, as, for, as, uh, example of something that the city's part of, having a lot of more, a hundred and twenty, for the stop all night. Kind of outlines the responsibility for that, one improvement that'll make, for, for other, you take over it. Talked about access, limiting the access on, kind of, to, 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 potentially step up and take over, or, take over... Then just step up and take over those, take over those.
They talked about a timeline for that, or?
That would be maybe, it's kind of something that gets them all going.
Okay, starting the conversation about.
Starting, starting the conversation, yeah.
And then we. Ideally, ideally, we'd have another path into Fargo, West Fargo before we start blocking out County seventeen again.
And that's what, another thing you got to focus, paving seventy six thousand to forty fifth street. So in twenty twenty one, they'll do the grading and the widening of that road. In twenty twenty two, they'll do the paving of seventy six thousand up to forty fourth street.
And that will become, that's the plan to become the new County Road six, moving it, redesignating it from County seventeen up to Fifty Second Avenue, it'll go, stay along seventy six and go north on Forty Fifth, and that will be the new County Road six.
Correct. They haven't said why that designation of fifteen yet, but it's probably when they do the second phase.
Right.
More about the giant, the second avenue.
Right.
Very good, good conversation with those guys. Southdale Farms is pretty much completely minus industrial stuff. Streetlights, that's now different, so I saw on your last, the base case from last week, so. How much longer do you think South did that, with the lights and the box? So the completion date is November second, and I think they'll push to get done before that, but I can see that it's done by that time. There was a hundred and forty two, same for lots, for fifth edition, Friday, and there was a hundred and forty out there. Doing some other, so really making that the new build, the completion date is really good. I think November second, November, month, month, completely determined, but.
And Lakeview slash eighty first now is considered complete? Not the, just not the church there? So they still haven't signed off on that, or?
No, they've yet, they still have four, four streetlights put up, first stop, well, uh.
So they still got a punch list, so technically they're still being charged.
They are still being charged.
Good grief.
No, I just wanted to get touch on those.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Cover, or one reminder is a coworking team from the twenty first of today, Wednesday. City through public for staff have been hydrant flushing. We got signs out there, a little beforehand, but notices out. But this reminder, the hydrant flushing has occurred. Also, since the Cass County is in level orange for COVID, Maryland, we're looking at options of how that impacts city halls. And we're looking at some, we may, we having some adjustments to state hall hours, accessibility, or mainly accessibility. We may be having the staff work remotely again, a bit earlier this year, without communication going out here in this week. We have changes there. Also, of course, that means expecting going out this week, one to the printers last week. So it shouldn't be going out this week, we're next. I'm assuming depending on how quick they get the printing done. And then the last item I have is, the city, we have put a request into Cass County for just, just under ninety eight thousand dollars in CARES Act funding from the county that they got for their enforcement. Our law people, as we're always told, our agreement with county is for. County exhibits for our deputies, for the deputies. That's what CARES Act reimbursement is for. Corey and I met with. And they're sure, we'll see. It's looking like they're willing to work with us on some cost shares or things like that. But they want to make sure it's related to how they're using their CARES Act dollars. So we're paying at for the technology upgrades, or are there other things that? Would be beneficial to us, but at the same time, being able to capitalize on that CARES Act funding. So we're looking at options, particularly how many of us have staff. Great stuff. We may see some projects that, okay, expensive enough, but we're looking at, like I said, technology. We have some that have been big or. One, one area that we're looking at is to break their website. Right here is my angle for websites, so. Now this. Our goal is to maximize as much of that, just as much as possible for the city.
Okay, so we didn't have on the agenda tonight, guys, was the fifty second, thirty second avenue. We're gonna put that on here, I didn't, it wasn't on there.
The, we, we reviewed the minutes from the last council meeting, the council actually threw the compare. So that's why it was.
Hit, go check if you don't make sure we get that done.
All right, support folder reports. The only thing I was gonna mention was. The County went to orange with the COVID thing, COVID capital, what's the horse they give up for Halloween? I'm not gonna vote for it or cancel it, it's part of our concerns, everybody kind of has their own personal responsibilities. If they want to do Halloween, go ahead, I'm not gonna take the hope with the objections, that everybody kind of, you know, follow the guidelines here, be a little careful how you do it. I also make a suggestion, maybe this year, everybody kind of being to their own neighborhood, goes around that way. You have your lights on, it'd be important to get through, as soon as you participate in Halloween, the lights are off. I understand this year you don't want to, that's fine, that's the way it works, so. But I say a piece, you want to practice doing Halloween, have a fun with the kids, then go ahead. That's all I've got, so. People, yeah.
Um, I don't really have anything specific, but I guess. We had posted one thing, I think on the table, we probably want to post to get it related, so there's no voting here in Morris at any time. Like, how many takes care of that, maybe turn it over to the spots. They communicate, I just want to make sure we communicate that again to citizens that not being, voting in or. It doesn't have a location.
And I think they copied, they, they copied the information. They're voting starting this already once, but.
I believe we got some posts.
Okay.
For that, so. His affirmation off of those. So those posts would go all. Certain, just as part of.
Great.
After then, if it earlier, this is probably.
Yeah.
We're all good, I don't have to, we'll.
Second.
Chelsea got that one.
Okay.
All favors say aye.
Aye.